Thank you for this special day. Bless all who were assembled here tonight. Watch over Mary Ann as she transitions back into private life. And guide our new council members, John Kilby and Kevin Cooley, as they go forward doing the work of the town. And help all of us in making those sometime tough decisions, all for the benefit of our community. We thank you and we ask these things in thy holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item number two is to adopt the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
I got a couple of changes.
Okay, Steve.
Under the consent agenda, the special meeting minutes. I'm on the page that's drawn again. Too many papers in here. My hand. We had a special meeting on November the 14th and the regular.
It's on page nine, 10, 11, 15.
Yeah, page 16. Okay, at the header on page eight, it should say 5:30 PM, which was the special meeting. And that was the hearing on the Morse Park. Other than that, those minutes are fine. The regular meeting minutes of November 14th, on the, on page five, the last paragraph under item A, ABC Store Walkway Bid Award, second line, it says that we approved the contact contract with Tomlin. It should be Tomblin Concrete is the name of the company. T-O-M-B-L-I-N Concrete.
Okay.
The, page 17, at the very bottom, has some comments about the closed session meetings concerning acquisition of property. And we need to amend this paragraph to include all of the discussion about the part of grant and the part of waiver and the part of funding that was a very important part of that conversation. And that occurred during those other meetings in August and September that are referenced here. To include, yeah, the amount of money of the grant and the intended use of the property, that kind of thing.
Okay, with that change, would you be willing to work with Ron to get that verbiage?
Yeah, I'd be willing to approve those with those amendments.
Okay.
Now, aside from that, under New Business BNC, did that change? Andrea, are you the one doing those oaths? All the oaths tonight because you had deputy there to fix that?
Should be.
Okay.
Yeah, it should just say Town Clerk.
Right, okay. Other than that, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, with those changes as amended, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous? Okay, the adoption of the agenda. Okay, Mayor's Communication. Would the Wade Nealon family please come forward? We have a resolution?
Oh.
Yeah, all of you. Even the little guy.
Please.
Awesome.
Spread out some of it. You know this guy, Blaine Cox, he must take your picture. The whole family. We put it on milk carton. While he does that, I'll read this. This is resolution number 12, I mean 171212, on the memory of Wade Wally Nealon. Whereas Wade Wally Nealon was born November 29th, 1947, in Rutherford County, North Carolina, passed away at his home on November 17th, 2017. And whereas Wade Nealon was the owner of the Wade Nealon Sanitation Services. And whereas Wade Nealon faithfully provided sanitation services to the residents and visitors in the town of Lake Lor for 47 years, from 1970 to 2017. Now therefore, it is resolved that the town of Lake Lor council desires to honor the memory of Wade for his contributions to the town and the Lake Lor community and hereby expresses its deepest sympathy upon his passing and extend condolences to the wife and family, adopted by unanimous vote of the town council on the 12th day of December, 2017. So I'm going to give that to you. Have a round of applause. Resolutions sometimes can come off very dry. But he provided a service every Monday, including holidays and never waivers. These guys have been out there in their trucks on both Mondays and Wednesdays doing the services for the town. So we really appreciate all their assistance. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve that resolution honoring the memory of Wade Wally Nealon.
Second by John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to share a very brief story with the Nealons. About three months ago, an individual approached me as I was walking my dog and said he wanted to talk to me about the trash pickup. And I asked him, "What's up?" And he says, "I want you to know, I've been here over 30 years." And he says, "You can set your clock by them. They are always there, they're always dependable." And I just wanted to share that with you.
Very good. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you all again. Appreciate it. Town Manager of Communications, Ron? Hydroelectric Plant Update?
Sure, thank you. Tonight, just a couple of updates for you. First, on the hydroelectric plant update. Council will be happy to know that the dry fit for the small generator will be occurring tomorrow and Thursday. We hope all of that goes well. And if it does, then we'll be looking at reinstalling the small generator, which has been a huge project for us. But we're excited about coming to the end of that and getting it back up and operating. Second, a concessions agreement update. As the board is aware, we had three respondents for the beach, marina, and tour boat operations concession agreement. At the last moment, Rumbling Bald Resort withdrew their, or I'm sorry, request for proposal. And the steering committee voted to proceed negotiations with Lake Lor Tours and develop some negotiating parameters that we then met with George. And we continue to talk to Lake Lor Tours about that. The plan is to present a contract back to the board with a recommendation from the steering committee. And that will likely be done prior to January 1st.
At a special meeting?
At a special meeting, yes, sir.
Do you need any motion from us of any kind tonight? Anything to proceed?
Only if you'd like to formalize the negotiating with Lake Lor Tours.
Is that common?
I think the steering committee has done an excellent job and they're moving forward. But if you feel more comfortable making it official, then we can do that.
We can't?
He says not needed.
Okay, not needed.
Just taking census, all right.
Okay, good.
Okay, good. Moving on, council liaison reports and comments? Why don't you just start, Stephen?
Well, one other thing on the hydroelectric plant update. I wanted to ask our town manager, understand the cost are getting pretty steep. So I was wondering if you could put together a detailed statement on invoices and all for that generator. Back in May, whenever the gentleman came and presented the briefing to us, I think I expressed at that time to Donnie and all and to let us know if the cost became excessive or more than what was anticipated at that time.
Be glad to.
Thank you. The Board of Adjustment met and only had one case. It was a vacation rental operating permit that was continued to this month. And I understand now that the folks have withdrawn it. So when the board meets again, they'll dispense with that business on their agenda. And then this coming month, they do have another case, I believe, to be heard. The Parks and Recreation Board met on December the 7th. The final inspection of the trail system has been conducted for Buffalo Creek Park and Weed Patch Mountain by the Asheville Regional Office of Land Quality and Land Quality Staff. And the project has been closed out. So it's all been approved. And a big thanks to Peter Barr for his work in helping with that and helping the town. Later on our agenda is the Buffalo Creek Park Parking Lot Agreement, which initially was approved a year and a half to two years ago. And then with changes with the state government after the election, it all got slowed down. And now that's back for final approval. And we'll talk about that more at that time. For some reason, at the Dipmer Watts Nature Trail, Mr. Dipmer reported that leaves have covered the trail. I don't understand what caused that. But he reported it. Thank you, Mr. Dipmer. Bill Massey said the decorations are finished on the flowering bridge and they do look well. Timers have been installed so they can cut them off earlier in the evening, after dark, and save a little bit on energy. The bridge is experimenting with LED lighting also to save on energy. Vandalism is still occurring at the bridge, but most of it, and most of it very minor thankfully. But it is still occurring. So if you see anything like that, report it to the police. The golf course is a little bit down overall for November. But that was, well, I'm sorry. It was up for November this year compared to last year because of the fire. But overall, we're a little bit low for the year. Membership renewal letters have gone out. So if you're a member of the golf course, get your renewal back in quick and let them know that you support them. As last month, as everyone knows, the Morse Park Plan was presented and approved. The electric vehicle charging center is being installed. That will have two ports for electric vehicles to hook up to and charge their vehicles. Discussions are still going on in the concession agreement. The security lights over by the Morse Park Gardens entrance and right behind it on the little island that had been out for over four years have been repaired. And Duke Power has refunded our money on those. The tennis court light is the only one that's still not working right now. And that's being worked on or will be worked on. We need to give kudos to Melody Potter and Andy for their Christmas decorations and getting them up. They look great throughout the town. They've done a super job. And that's all I have to report on the Parks and Recreation. The Lake Structure Appeals Board did not meet. There were no cases.
Very good, John?
The zoning planning board did not meet this past month, but the asset management board met this morning. Really, the only thing we had on their agenda was the meeting schedule for the upcoming year. And we reviewed or got an update on the marina contract or the concession agreement that a couple of their members were working on. And then there are three lots on Buffalo Shoals Road that are very steep that were donated to the town by John Haywood Moore in 2010, I think it was. And we're just brainstorming about different options, what we might do with those to make them more useful for the town of Lake Lor. That was it.
Very good. Mary Ann?
All right, the Lake Advisory Board met and approved their 2018 meeting schedule. They meet the first Monday of each month, except when that date falls on or near some of the holidays, when they move it to the second week. They recommended approval of the 2018 commercial boat license applicants as presented. Also, that was approved by the Ring Commission earlier tonight. They had some discussion regarding safety on the lake. And Gary Hosenfoss will continue the Christmas tree habitat this year. Those of you who have live trees, he will help you dispose of them after Christmas, even though the lake is lured. That greatly adds to the habitat and the good fishing, which he reported had been very good in October and November. And that was pretty much it, except that the dredging at the river had stopped because they had filled the berm. The ABC Board reported sales up 30% over last month, last year, and feel that part of that is because of the party rock fire and all that was going on back then. There is nothing new to report regarding moving forward with renovations of the strip mall or moving the store at this time. That's all.
All right, Utilities Board did not meet this month. And just to let you know, the town's still working with Spindell, trying to get a contract established. And that's all we have to report.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we do need board members. We're going to have one or two leaving the Utilities Board. And please sign up. So we'd love to have you.
Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the public comment. I failed to mention, under Mayor's Communications Act, we have esteemed a guest in the audience. And he is the mayor of Rutherford, and his wife. I told him that we had already voted for mayor, that we couldn't accept another one. But anyway, it's in the public comment area. And I basically, I've never seen Jimmy in a meeting where he hadn't had something to say. So if you'd like to. Nobody signed up. But if anybody would like to make public comment, you're more than welcome to raise your hand and come on up. Seeing none, we can move on. I guess we approved the consent agenda already earlier with the changes.
We approved the overall agenda, but we haven't approved the entire consent agenda.
Okay. But I could have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the modifications as adopted before.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Bob. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous? Okay, unfinished business. Moving on to number eight. This is the Rutherford County Fire Service District Service Contract and First Responder Services Addendum. And Ron is here. He took time out from their Christmas party tonight. He's invited everybody over.
I didn't know.
They have a lot of ham, especially in that department.
Exactly.
Counsel, what you have in front of you should be the same as last month with the addition of the First Responder Addendum that was accidentally omitted when the packet was forwarded from the county. And what we took the liberty of doing is providing a blank copy. For some reason, this year, we have adopted, all of our county contracts have been renewed. So if you'd like, we can just adopt this one. New and all of them will be dated the same year. I do have a copy of the current signed one in hand. It's not necessary, but if you want to adopt them all new, it'll be good to go. And if you have any questions, please.
Well, we postponed this or continued until this month so our attorney could review that addendum, which wasn't here last month. And I assume you've had that opportunity, sir?
I did. It looks good.
Okay. And now that I see the addendum, it requires us to organize and maintain a first responder unit that will comply with the applicable terms of the system plan. What does that, do we already have that unit? Or is that going to cause something new?
No, this is nothing new. This addendum is already in play. Like I said, I have a signed copy. We just provided you with a blank new one if you wanted to update it while we're updating everything else. So this is nothing new than what we're doing. They've just attached this to the new contract so it all becomes one contract with all the addendums included. And as I mentioned last month, a few months ago, we approved a new addendum, a new EMS addendum that allows us to go even further than this. So this basically is the minimum and we've already chosen to go further than this.
So it doesn't place any new responsibilities upon it?
Nothing new.
Or requirements?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. If I could digress for a second while I got you. I see your monthly staff report. You had two classes, one on firefighter certification and forcible entry, and then emergency vehicle driver certification class. Basically, how many attendees did you have at each class?
I won't go from memory, but the emergency vehicle driver class, and this consisted of members from multiple fire departments. Probably around, close to 20, 15 to 20. And then the other class, we had around 15 in it.
And those were all done here?
At local fire departments.
Awesome, great, thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve that contract? Signing of the contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the county service district service contract and first with the first responder services addendum between Rutherford County and the town of Lake Lor and to authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second it.
Second by Mary Ann. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, Ron?
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate it.
Go back to dinner. Thanks for coming in, Ron. Thanks for all the things you do.
Appreciate it.
Item C, trial and base circle. It's a reconsideration of the one-way designation. You have gotten a copy of the report, the survey. I guess, have you looked it over?
Yeah, we continued this last month in order to get a survey and responses.
Looks like it's overwhelmingly that people are not in favor of one-way. It's down in the front, yeah, right here.
Right. Ron, do you want to explain the results or?
Sure, sure, be glad to. We did receive 18 total responses to the survey. That was out of 30 total. 16 were electronic, two decided to call in instead of fill out the electronic surveys. We had 18 total. Of that, 14 prefer trial and base circle to remain one-way, about 78%. Those that prefer two-way were three, about 17%. And we did receive no response from one person to the question, which is about 5%. So again, roughly about 78% felt it was important to remain one-way.
Of those that responded?
Of those that responded, yes, ma'am.
Right. And I got a phone call, actually it was a neighbor looking for a plumber. But he is, he was one of the two on the ingoing side of the circle that didn't understand why this was being brought up again. And I regret that the pictures and the explanation didn't go out to the people being asked about this survey. And I'm referring to what I gave to counsel when we discussed it last week. And those were pictures of the vehicles either blocking the road so that you couldn't go one way and you had to go the wrong way. Or you had to go the right way until you saw that you couldn't go the right way and find a place to turn around and go back the wrong way. But a number of years ago, the two first houses coming in were given permission, it was voted on by council. And Blaine Cox reminded me of that, because I forgot to mention it when we discussed it last month, that those two, their driveways are such that they don't have to travel far the wrong way. And in fact, as you mentioned today, you could move the one-way sign just past their driveways and it would be no deal. Because you're going the right way anyway if you're on that side of the road. But he was very concerned and a little paranoid that he didn't want to lose his right to go out on the inside. On the other hand, there were four residents who wanted on the other side, between the two-lane bridge which crosses Kane Creek and the highway, to be able to come into their residences on the wrong side, which is somewhat problematic. And going back to the other side where it isn't problematic, I don't think anything was ever done to clarify that. Because our current town manager didn't know that permission had been given. And council has changed several times. So in discussing with the police chief what some of the problems were, one solution would be just not to restrict it as one-way, since it is the only town road in town. And let people use their own judgment as they come and go. There are some narrow places, but if you travel Charlotte Drive and out onto the island where you go onto the one-way bridge, and then there is a circle. I think there are places in there that are even more narrow. And I've had some really harrowing experiences trying to back up, to get to a place I could turn out, turn around and go out the wrong way in order to come in the wrong way. If, for some of the people who live, say, in the center, it makes very little difference. And/or, and even some of the ones that oppose it do go out the wrong way. They just don't get caught, because I see them. But some of the possible, a trial moratorium for a period of time to see if it's a problem. We do have people going the wrong way. We do have people blocking the road. And last summer, anytime I turned in the correct side of the road, I had about a 50/50 chance of getting home without having to back up, turn around, go out, and come in the wrong way. So if we choose not to lift the restriction, I would like to move to have the town manager look at the situation on the two sides to involve the police chief and key residents on the circle to see if there is a modification that can be made official and enforced so that one would be to have that one would be to have no, on the side coming in, to have a sign that simply says no through traffic. And then there is an area across the two-lane bridge where those going the wrong way can turn around and go back out. But I think that is something that maybe requires some further service than we can deal with tonight or some investigation.
What would you recommend?
The simplest would be to lift the restrictions.
That sort of goes against the survey, though.
Right.
That's the perplexing part that we have is that.
Exactly.
We said a survey might tell us something and what we're doing is going against it. So with that in mind, what's your next recommendation?
Well, with the survey, and I gave my answer to the survey verbally because surveys don't, they don't tell you what it is you're trying to do. And it, I haven't had time to, I just got the results today to look at who did what. And the survey doesn't, doesn't say, I don't believe. That's why I was asking you to explain it, where the people live, because I know more than two people who want to come in and go out that way, on the ends. In the middle, one that almost hit me backing up to get out of the way of a dump truck that was going the wrong way, said if I made it two-way, he'd sell his house. So I don't know what kind of logic that is, but it's something that folks don't agree on. And I don't want to put it on the back of manager, but I would be glad to work with you and the police chief and talk to some of the folks and see if there is a remedy on the two ends that would not be problematic to anybody else.
Would anybody disagree with allowing this to float for another month? There's no harm done. It's still a one-way street. But allow Mary Ann to work with Ron to see if there's an acceptable way through signage to move them all back.
I'll be glad to make a motion to that and have them report back to council next month. Do that.
Okay.
So motion made. Bob, go ahead, second.
Continuing it till the, what, January, is that the night? What day do we meet?
Next council meeting and then.
January the ninth?
Yep. Allow more study on it.
That's fine.
Allow Mary Ann to work with Ron.
That's fine.
Fine. Answer quick.
Here's somebody. I second the motion, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions for Mary Ann? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against?
Against.
Okay. It's unanimous. Okay. Item D, Buffalo Creek Park, our parking lot agreement. By the way, there were a lot of leaf infestation on the park as well. Somehow that happened in the other side of town. All right. It's an agreement. Town of Lake Lour Fairfield Mountains Property Owners Association, the state of North Carolina. It's a lot of agreement.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, we did this in 2015, it says here, so it's been a while. I said a year and a half to two years, probably been a little over two. It was an agreement between us, the state and Fairfield Mountains. Fairfield approved it. We approved it. The state did not. The administration changed. They made changes to the agreement. The changes made to the agreement affect are largely between Fairfield and the state. Fairfield has now signed off on the new agreement and the state will, if we do. The changes for the town are none. So I recommend that we approve, well, I make a motion to approve the revised Buffalo Creek Park parking lot agreement between the town of Lake Lour, the state of North Carolina, and the Fairfield Mountains Property Owners Association and to authorize the town manager to execute the necessary documents.
I'll second. Okay. Motion made by Stephen, seconded by John. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item number nine, and even though it's new business and typically the new mayor takes over, I'm going to preside for the first three of these. And what we'd like to do now is to have the new people sworn in. The first one would be the oath of office for Mayor Kevin Cooley. Mayor, you come forward. Andy? And Yvonne, you want to come on up and hold the, Yvonne, where'd she go?
Lovely one.
Oh, right there. I'm sorry. You were sitting in the back before.
She went ahead.
Just in case.
The employees solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of North Carolina, inconsistent therewith, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to said state and the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties as mayor to the best of your ability according to the law.
I will. Okay. Good. I'll give you a second, a little while.
Yeah.
Okay. The oath for Commissioner John W. Moore. Is Paula here?
No. Paula is the basketball game.
Okay.
Would anybody like to stand in?
Do you, John Moore solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of North Carolina, inconsistent therewith, and that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to said state and the constitutional powers and authority which are and may be established, faithfully discharge your duties as commissioner to the best of your ability according to the law, so help you God.
I will. And now, Mr. Cooley. Come on forward. Over here. Come over here. First thing, we're going to retire this.
All right.
And we're going to bring this one back in here. The new mayor. We've got all the power in the world.
Thank you, Paul.
Take this.
Thank you, Bob.
He didn't even take his coffee cup or ink pen.
No, he left his cup up here, Bob.
And his ink pen.
See what's in it?
Well, let me, first of all, start out by, my first official duty, by thanking everyone who's come here tonight. For me and for the members of the town council, this is an extremely encouraging sign that our community is involved and engaged in government. And I appreciate that and I hope you will all come back again, even when cake is not being served. There's a couple of things I need to do of business prior to us taking a recess to have cake. And the first order of business is going to be, I want to say thank you and do a little recognition to Bob and Mary Ann as outgoing members of the town council. So I am going to, first of all, though, introduce someone who's here, who's already been introduced by Bob, one of his good friends and a fellow mayor, Jimmy Dancy from Rutherfordton, who'd like to say just a couple of words about his good and old friend, Bob Keith. May you make him come forward here and share some things with us.
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed you said a couple of things. Bob Keith knows that's difficult to do, a couple of things, but we will learn from that. But first, Mayor, council, thank you for allowing Ginger and myself to be a part of this special night here in Lake Lour and our big, long drive up from Rutherford to be a part of this special event as we honor Mayor Keith. Bob and I actually started this journey at the same time. We were both elected the first time around, eight years ago. In fact, I don't think we even knew each other prior to we ended up, I think, up in Western Carolina where they provided a meeting where we learned to be a mayor. And we got started off great, and Dennis Harland was the first time around down in Forest City. And I'm honored to say that over those eight years, it has been a pleasure to work with, seek to continue that friendship from now on. And I wanted to bring you a special gift, Bob. I'll take part of TDA's responsibility here and tell you, you may not know, but Rutherford is celebrating its 230th birthday this year. So we have a lot of history there to talk about and relive and tell everybody about what we're proud of. And what I brought Bob tonight is, we have a town historian, Robin Lattimore, that he's written several books about our town. Dealing with 230 years, you've got quite a bit of stuff to talk about. But Robin does a great job in that he does a lot of his talking with pictures. So his last book that was just published this year is Rutherford, North Carolina, History of Our Town. I wanted to present this to Bob. He has signed it on the inside and not to downgrade his ability, I've signed it also. But I, golly, I didn't realize I was talking tough. But thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And I hope you will look at that and remember all the great eight years we've gathered and don't want to forget about you, so come and see us.
Will do. I thought I was going to get one of the T-shirts. This is special. And I told him he didn't have a meeting where he doesn't speak. I'm not being.
Mayor Cooley. We just said thank you to our previous mayor. Now, I thought it was a special time, we need to say hello to the new mayor. Over my 18 years of being on the council down in Rutherford, I have come through a lot of experiences there. One of the things you're going to find out pretty quickly is that you attend a lot of meetings and you talk about little thing, everything, a lot of meetings. And no disrespect to this council or anybody else on any committee, but there are some of those meetings that seem like they just go on forever and it becomes a challenge at some time, but you have to take it into perspective. So I have brought you officially something that I have found out, that if you get into one of those long occasions where it just keeps going on and on, there is a certain thing that you can use that will guarantee change things around. So use it as your own experience. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Lake Lour.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Okay. Well, while we're on the subject of Bob Keith, I have a couple of things I'd like to give him as parting gifts and say a few words of thank you. I'm going to come around front there and hopefully I can speak loud enough so everyone can hear me. I'd like to present these to Bob in person. And I would also ask, when I come around there, Bob, if you would come up and Pam, if you would please, I know you hate to do this, but this is Bob's last meeting, so if you would come up here and be seen.
He thinks I'm going away.
Okay. So just, I mean, a few personal words from me about Bob. You know, Bob and I over the years have become good friends and I've come to a number of town council meetings and I've always been impressed by the professionalism of the council, in particular of its mayor. Bob has, in my opinion, set a high bar. He's been a great example for me and I've just spent the last, what, Bob, about six months, every Wednesday, I had to be a mayor's school with Bob Keith. And so I'm feeling pretty good this evening about setting forth as a new mayor. But I just want you all to realize how very lucky this town has been for the past eight years to have the quality of person sitting in the center of the dais up here and presiding over meetings. Bob has been a wonderful, wonderful public servant and town leader and, like he said, I have no intention of him going away. I have his telephone number and I have a little desk we just put in the office that Bob's welcome to use any time. But I'm not sitting, you're not sitting in the same room. He tried that today. Put my tab over there. But I want to present Bob with a couple of parting gifts. The first one is a plaque he can hang on the wall and this is presented to Robert "Bob" Keith in recognition of dedicated public service and outstanding contributions as mayor, town of Lake Lour, December 2009 to December of 2017. And along with that, Bob's favorite toy, which he's, I understand he's worn out in the last eight years, and that is his favorite gavel. And so, Bob, I want to present these two things to you on behalf of the town and say thank you.
Appreciate it.
And then one last thing, why are you standing very quickly? Bob wouldn't be as successful mayor as he is, and I know this for a fact, without the support of his wife, the first lady of Lake Lour.
Amen. Amen.
Bob is not going to make this stand up here ever again. Thank you very much. All right. Well, you can go.
Just a couple of parting things. Appreciate all of you. Appreciate all the town people. I'll miss you all. I'm going to get a little teary. Anyway, Pam says don't. Anyway, I just want to thank all of you. I want to thank the two people who ran for office, Esther and Melvin. I think Melvin's still here. I really appreciate that. It goes a long way to say, and not prevail. Congratulations to all the winners up here and we wish the new, the old council, the new council, all the best of luck going forward. I think our town is in good hands.
Thank you, Bob. And now, Mary Ann, would you just come forward one more time, please? And I think we also owe a tremendous thank you and debt of gratitude to Mary Ann Silby. She has been on this town council, serving since December of 2009. And well beyond that, her service here at town council, I think most of us here who know anything about Lake Lour know that Mary Ann Silby's contributions go way beyond serving on this town council. Every time I drive by the mayhem clinic, I think of Mary Ann and that wouldn't have been possible without her. And there's so many other things that we see in the town every day that are there because of the stewardship of Mary Ann and her colleagues here on the town council. So I just want to say, Mary Ann, on behalf of myself personally, as a resident, and now the mayor, and on behalf of your colleagues on the town council, and on behalf of all these folks that have shown up to see this event and say thank you. She has been on this town council, serving since December of 2009. And well beyond that, her service here at town council, I think most of us here who know anything about Lake Lour know that Mary Ann Sylvie's contributions go way beyond serving on this town council. Every time I drive by the mayhem clinic, I think of Mary Ann. And that wouldn't have been possible without her. And there's so many other things that we see in the town every day that are there because of the stewardship of Mary Ann and her colleagues here on the town council. So I just want to say, Mary Ann, on behalf of myself personally, as a resident and now the mayor, and on behalf of your colleagues on the town council and on behalf of all these folks that have shown up to see this event and say thank you, I want to say thank you on behalf of the town. And Mary Ann's plaque, which she also received as a gift of the town, says, "Mary Ann Sylvie in recognition of dedicated public service and outstanding contributions as Commissioner, Town of Lake Lour, December 2009 to December 2017." Again, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulate John and look forward to seeing his service with the town. It has been an honor to serve. And that's about all I need to say right now. I have enjoyed parts of it, parts of it have been difficult. We've had challenges. We all do what we can, but we love this place. And that's what we all share in common. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, Mary Ann. Well, that was the final piece of business that we had to do before we have our recess for cake. And so at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into recess. And I would say, let's recess for twenty minutes. That should be enough time to have cake.
Motion's not required for recess.
Get used to it, Ken.
Motion's not required. All you do is, hey, all you do is slam your hammer and say recess.
Is that it? All right, well then I declare recess for twenty minutes. You're starting already.